Going to call public meeting to order for the notice of intent to file for federal funding assistance for the construction of two wastewater pumping stations. That would be the beginning of our town council meeting for August 7, 2013. Notice intent to file for federal funding assistance for the construction of two replacement wastewater pumping stations. In accordance with the United States Department of Agriculture, USDA, and Rural Utility Service, RUS, Regulations 1780-19A and B, the town of New Windsor is providing public notice of their intent to file for federal funding assistance for the construction of two replacement wastewater pumping stations. The town of New Windsor has applied for a USDA Rural Utility Service loan to replace two aging wastewater pumping stations. The maximum amount of the loan is $920,000. The loan period will be for 40 years. The loan will be for the reimbursement of actual expenses, so the final loan amount may be less than the full $920,000. The funds will be used to replace two aging pumping stations, one located at Main and Water Streets, the other on Code Drive. Both stations are over 50 years old and use a pneumatic pumping method that is outdated. The new stations will use a modern and reliable pump station. The stations will be large enough to accommodate the currently planned growth. The debt service for the loan is included in the current rate calculation, so an adjustment to the rates is not necessary at this time. Any questions or comments from the council? Any public input questions? Okay, so we'll move on. End of the public meeting for that part. Called to order, I call to order the council meeting for August 7, 2013. If everyone would rise and join the committee in pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our meetings are recorded electronically. We go by an agenda. Anyone wishing to speak later in the meeting, we ask you to sign up over by the table there. Anyone that wanted to have something on the agenda for tonight should have had it by last Wednesday at 3 o'clock to Town Hall. Approval of minutes for the July 3, 2013, meeting. Everyone has had them emailed twice.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from July 3.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Knoll, second by Councilman Smith, to approve the minutes from the July 3 meeting. All those in favor who can find me saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so carry. Due to business being good for one local business and hopefully for others here in New Windsor, I'm going to change the agenda a little bit under Mayor's report. As you know, in the past, we started recognizing businesses here in New Windsor for years of service to the town of New Windsor, and now I'm going to start recognizing new businesses so that awareness and promotion of their businesses is done a little bit better than what we've done in the past. So first, since they were here first and the only reason, Matt and Malia West, if you would come up forward and talk about your business a little bit.
Basically, we just took over the old K&amp;B Family Restaurant. Coach is now set to retire, so we took over. We're going to be turning into a family-style restaurant. It's going to be called Uncle Matty's Eatery, and hopefully we'll be open by the end of the month.
All right.
Giving it simple.
He's still going to incorporate some of the three favorites of the town halls, and then he's going to do a new twist on his own thing, so I'm very excited.
And opening date, give or take?
Give or take. I'm aiming for August 29.
August 29. All right, so good luck to you, and thanks for coming here, and hopefully our citizens will support you. All right, so thank you. Next, we have Robert Pushtary, who I believe is co-owner of Lone Star. Just took over. Welcome.
Thank you.
Want to say a few words?
Yeah, my business partner, Phil Schaefer, he's out of town for the week, so sorry he couldn't be here with you. Just trying to bring a good, solid business, good, solid restaurant, good food. I know you guys, I've heard of your reputation, and it's awesome that we're going to have them. I'm hoping, we're all hoping to draw people from Westminster to New Windsor to eat some good food in a family-style restaurant. Very simple.
All right, thank you. And all I can do is ask that the citizens of New Windsor and surrounding area come to New Windsor and find a nice place to eat, so support our local business. Thank you for coming. So I know you said business was booming, and you got to go.
It's great.
Great.
Great, good. Excellent. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right, under council committees, Public Works, Councilman Farkas is under the weather, unable to be here tonight. As you noticed, westbound Main Street and High Street has been milled and repaved where there were some bad spots. Eastbound will be done. I was at a meeting two weeks ago, Carroll County Traffic Task Force that I sit on, and they said that it should be done in the next two weeks. Apparently, the milling on the other side of the road is not as major, and they can do it basically in-house and do it, so hopefully that'll be done in the next couple of weeks. Water and Sewer, Councilman Pauls Grove.
There's two issues that I would like to share that I don't see in Frank's report, but Frank, you may be able to elaborate on these a little bit. Number one is, we are aware of a water leak up at the corner of Main Street and Blue Ridge Avenue, and Counsel, you've seen some emails about some of this in regards to waiting until we can get a company that will be able to find that water leak to do some digging rather than digging and trying to find it, because we don't know exactly where it is. But hopefully, that'll be, that'll take place sometime in the next week or two. And the other thing is, Frank shared with me that, remember several months ago, we had an issue with the wastewater treatment plant, the control panel tripping out because of excessive heat, and we had some pumps that didn't run when they were supposed to. Apparently, that problem has been resolved. There were some filters in the control panel that need to be cleaned, and once those are cleaned, then the air can move through the panel, and the heat trips don't trip out as they did when the air doesn't move. So we're glad that that was resolved. It was unfortunate that it went on as long as it did, and that the company that put it in didn't take care of it, or let us know about it, or whatever. But anyway, that issue is behind us. And Frank has several other things, water and sewer-related, that he will share in his report.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilman Pauls Grove? Public Safety, Councilman Knoll.
Okay, I'll start with the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission did not meet last month. We will take some action on zoning ordinance later in the meeting. Public Safety, Corporal Towson could be here tonight, so I'll go ahead and give his report. I want to thank everybody who came to National Right Out last night. I think it was a pretty good event. 175, 200 people there, it wasn't too bad. The weather held off, and everybody seemed to enjoy it. I certainly want to thank the corporate sponsors, Target. They do a great job helping us every year. They brought down some of their staff, had cake there, so it was a nice event. Certainly, the Fire Department, they're a big help in the demonstration that they put on. The New Windsor Lions Club helped serve food. The hot dogs and sodas we gave away, and the Sheriff's Department for all their help, and certainly the agencies and the groups that had displays. Couldn't make it without them. So we're growing every year. I think the first year, we had about 50 people there. Every year, we're growing, so it's nice to see. The Sheriff's Department responded to 97 incidents in July. Of those of interest, there was a juvenile arrest made on juvenile for assault here in town. There was a break-in entering at the liquor store. There was one in June, if you may recall. This one, thanks to some quick action by some citizens in the Sheriff's Department, they made three arrests of suspects. They were responsible for the first break-in, as well as a number of other break-ins around the county. So it wasn't just New Windsor they were targeting. The three arrests were made, so that's a good thing. If you were down at National Right Out last night, you saw some graffiti on the carnival grounds. That occurred July 30 to 31. If anybody happened to have been around and saw anything suspicious, or even remotely suspicious, give Corporal Towson a call. Any little bit of information may be helpful. So he's working that case, but we don't have any other information at this point. Unless anybody has any questions, that's all I have.
No, but I want to thank you for your participation in working with Mark in having a successful night last night. And also, Councilman Knoll mentioned about citizen input. If there wouldn't have been citizen input, I don't think there would have been three arrests made for those break-ins. And that's how important your involvement is, you know, looking out for your neighbor's house, your own house. Seeing something suspicious, please report it. If it's nothing, that's great, but it could always lead to an arrest or maybe prevention. So thank you for...
Let me tack on to that.
Sure thing.
There's, years ago, we had a neighborhood watch program. It was pretty successful, and seemed to run its course, though. And Corporal Towson, I've tried several times to get another neighborhood watch program going. If anybody has any interest, just contact him or me. We'll be glad to try to coordinate something. You don't have to do the whole town. We can do neighborhoods, whatever, but you know, it's a good program, but we need to support the citizens. Couple people can't do it. It just doesn't work. So if there's any interest, just get to me or Corporal Towson.
And also, thank the New Windsor Lions Club for their participation last night as Any questions for Councilman Knoll? Economic Development, Councilwoman Schultz.
Just that I heard from Tyler Gearhart from Preservation Maryland, because he has spoken with Cindy Stone, knew that you were meeting about the block grant, and he just offered the same kinds of assistance he's offered before. So I told him I'd get back with him, because I knew you were going to have some updates on that eventually.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilwoman Schultz? Community Enhancement, Councilman Smith.
We have our first concert coming up this Saturday at 7 o'clock. I'm sorry, Sunday, Sunday. This Sunday at 7 o'clock at the Brethren Center. I hope people come out and support that. The band's name is Robin and the Rhythmics. They do a mixture of pretty much everything, from the 50s on up to current. They promised to put on a pretty decent show for us, weather permitting. And then we have the next one coming up on August 25, I believe it is, which is a Sunday also, in a couple of weeks. Again, getting a late start on this. We started with two this year, and hopefully we'll grow that and get some more involvement. The Lions Club has once again stepped up to the plate and offered to provide some refreshments for the people that attend that. So we're encouraging everybody, bring blankets, bring chairs, bring family, bring friends, drag the little ones over there, and let them listen to some real music, and hopefully have a good time. Other than that, I've put out a couple feelers to what people would like to see done to kind of generate some town spirit. We have talked a little bit about a possible, some sort of festival. The logistics of that, I understand, are a little bit more complicated after speaking with Councilman Knoll last night, so we're working on some ideas there. And a good way to start is to show that people really want to participate in these things by coming to these concerts. That would be the good way to start that. So we're hoping to grow and do some things that are going to be fun for everybody.
And you're guaranteeing good weather?
I wish I could. I'm only in middle management, and there's somebody bigger than me that's in charge of that, so.
All right. Thank you for getting those up in short notice, really. So excellent job. Thank you.
And also thanking Roma is our town hard worker. I mean, I don't even know what to describe her, but she put together some flyers for me and helped me word some things, and so I appreciate her help also.
And I want to thank former Councilman Sam Pierce back there that met with Ed and worked with him to get some information over to him for the concert, so thank you.
The Pierce's in general have been wonderful. I think I stated that in the past. They've been very gracious in my victory in the election, and then to pass on some of his knowledge. Glad he threw all of his knowledge at me at once, my head might explode. But some of his knowledge and history to me about how to kind of get started, and that's so invaluable to me is Mr. Pierce and Mrs. Pierce.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilman Smith? All right, Mayor's Report. Welcome new business to New Windsor. We've already done that for two local businesses, and we see the owners of a third new business. They've been here approximately about a year, but if you would come up forward, Frank DeFatta and his wife, I believe, if you would like to come up and say a few words about your business, release your mouths. Nice to have you here in town now. Anywhere? You're fine, right there.
Well, we're grateful to be here, and Mr. Frank is the person I know the most, and he helped me with what I need, all the different things, you know, with the Carroll County Health Department, the permits, and all this stuff. And he was very helpful with Mr. Dale, also from zoning.
Dale Gray, right.
And we appreciate the business. And we're growing, but it's going slow, but you know, it's a process of building it up, and hopefully, you know, it gets better. But we survived it, and we're thankful for the business that we had, and it was very nice.
We found it unique. Oh, I find it unique. The people will come in, and they order food, but it's like a meeting place. They know each other, and it's like you feel a difference of having a business there. It's not conventional.
Great.
And I think people feel comfortable. They send their kids in, and they buy things. There's more, it's a different atmosphere. It's not like the one we have in Westminster, which is a whole different story.
Wait, you didn't say that.
I've been there. And in our other locations, you just, you have a different feel for different areas. So that's why I'm saying, it's more of a rural home, very earthy, friendly atmosphere, very comfortable atmosphere. Older people, younger people, I mean, there is no set goal, so it's different.
Good. And I'm glad to hear the positives about our staff, but in reality, our, the town doesn't really control a lot of the permitting as the county and state does.
I still...
Could you make any suggestions for anybody else coming into town? You know, the process?
Well, the permits, you know, the county is very tough, especially with the handicap situation.
ADA.
ADA, you know, that's ridiculous.
Right.
I mean, some of your rules, they make you laugh, they make you cry, because you can't see it. It's like, you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't.
Right.
So that's awful.
Of course, that's federal civil rights.
Yeah, but there's only so much you can do. If you only have so much space, you can't, you know, stretch it so much, but when you can't, you can't.
Also, contrary to what I heard about the break-ins or whatever, I mean, we worked there about eight, nine months, every day, and we liked tools outside and whatever. We didn't have to be in this. I was very impressed with that.
Good.
But then again, you know, there's always a first time.
Just happens sometimes.
Yeah, but we found that it was very, you know, very friendly, everything, nothing stolen, the break-ins, they had tools in there, and while we were working with them.
Great, great.
Again, thank you for the business, and hopefully, if you have any suggestions, we'd like to hear.
All right, well, we appreciate you coming to New Windsor.
Thanks for coming. Thank you.
No reason to be hungry in New Windsor.
Nope.
All right, on with my report. Valerie Mann, who we approved funding, some funds last month to do grant writing. She came out and met with Frank, Donna, and I, and want to thank Sam and Darce Pierce for giving her a night's stay at the house, so greatly appreciate that. She's doing the sustainable community application for us, and should have that done in about a week or two. There are a couple of things that ID'd to do, and that's to which we're going to address later, and that's a sustainable communities resolution, and then also form a task force, which I've got probably about five or six people willing to sit on that. That has to be part of the application process. What the sustainable community application will do, if it's approved, or hopefully when it's approved by the state of Maryland, will allow us to be eligible for other grants to help replace sidewalks, curbs, paving, water and sewer lines without costing the citizens to do that. So she's kind of waiting on me to give her the lead on what direction to go next, due to the fact that a meeting that we had Monday afternoon, Councilman Knoll, Frank, and Donna, and myself were there with Jim Castle, who's with the Department of Housing and Community Development Block Grant Program, and then Les Hall, who is the Program Manager for Small Business Financing, Office of Finance Programs, Maryland Department of Business and Economic Development. Basically, we sat down and see how they could help us with grants to restore Dillman Inn. The meeting was extremely positive and very productive, and hopefully, we will hear back either by Friday or early next week if they are going to ask us to submit a application, an application for funding through their program. If we do that, we could see some major activity at Dillman Inn within the year. So we'll keep everybody posted on that. Yes, sir?
Is that matching funding grant?
That's, no, that's 100%. Yes, sir. Now, there will be, our part was the purchase of the property, $175,000, $174,500. That was huge for the state to see that we had made that financial commitment. Had we not had the purchase of that, I don't think we would have gone any further. So that, once they saw that we had made that commitment, I think that was huge on them talking to us. And like I say, we'll know something, hopefully, within a few days on that, where to go. There is a community development block grant annual training workshop. They have one a year, and talk about perfect timing. It's next Wednesday, so I will be going down Crownsville to that workshop next Wednesday. So you have, that's mandatory, and if we didn't go there next week, then we'd have to wait another year for it. So I will be attending that down in Crownsville. So that was excellent timing. Another positive thing on that was that they asked to meet with us. It wasn't that we asked them and they sent a representative out, you know, to talk to us. They asked for us to have a meeting with them so that they could help us. So that was, I think, very positive. I think that's most of my report. Any questions, comments on Mayor's Report? Community Deputy, we heard from Councilman Knoll. West Carroll Rec Council, I don't believe we have Representative. Fire Chief, he's not here, he's working, farming back there, anything? Bingo every Tuesday night? Town Manager Report.
Do you'd like to turn to Tab 5, if you can follow along? We talked about a little bit our wastewater pumping station project. We're following through with the USDA Rural Utility Service application, and we're at what's called the obligation stage. That's basically where they say they're willing to obligate a certain amount of funds for us. And I know that 920 sounds like a bigger number than maybe what we've been hearing, but they, being the USDA folks, encouraged us to sort of put the upper limits on what we thought costs would be. And we added something in there which we hadn't talked about before, which is the cost of entry from financing, if we have to get financing. Because it's a reimbursement, and they pay you at the end of the project, we may have to get financing at the front end to carry us to the end. All our legal costs, all our administrative costs, inspection costs, they're all in there. So it took the actual cost of the project up a little bit, but the pumping station cost is still around $800,000, which is what we had been talking about for quite a while. The long-anticipated and much-talked-about Lions Park Playground project is under construction. They're moving quickly. They finished their grading yesterday, started installing equipment, and the first big piece of equipment is about two-thirds installed. If you get a chance, you should drive by there. It's really going to be nice, I think.
Did you get a chance to talk to them and see if they would take a picture and email it to us, so we put it on our website, so everybody can see the progress?
Of the project now?
Yeah.
It'll be done next Wednesday.
I know.
Okay, I'll get one tomorrow.
Okay.
Well, no, I won't, but I'll have someone get over there tomorrow and get that.
Because I know the playground specialists are on Facebook, and they could maybe even put it on Facebook.
Yeah, I'll have someone get a picture and get it on the website. But like I said, it'll be done by, according to them, it'll be done by the middle of next week. And what I saw the last two days, I pretty much believe that. So that'll be, that'll be a good project to get done. Our Water and Sewer Study, GMV is finalizing the breakouts from Main Street for the Main Street and High Street, the part we want that coincides with the revitalization, as well as the mainspring waterline project. And we'll have that, and we'll go over that at the work session in August. I know I said I'd have it for you last time, but I promise you this time, it's really it. Lagoon Reimuniation, we talked about this at the work session, but just to go over it again. We only got one response to our RFQ, which was quite disappointing, but we've, I've had some conversations with various people that did or did not respond, and we're going to rework that a little bit and then take another run at it, because we do need to have at least two qualified firms. We can't really go ahead with one for a project that big. So we're going to back up, rework it a little bit, bring it back to you again to make sure you're comfortable with it. And we had some ideas that we talked about at the work session. I'll try and bounce them off people and see what, whether that works well. So we'll, we're back on that, but it'll be a little bit. Other New Windsor Heights, the developers paved around the raised manholes, and while the manholes still stick up, we've got little, instead of having the manhole sticking straight up like this, there's a paving around it that at least if you run up on it, you'll get a little bit of a ride up rather than hitting the bottom of your car. I don't know if Councilman, you want to say anything or not? Okay. I mean, it isn't, it isn't great, but it's better than it was. The one thing I would just mention is that, and I don't know how this works out, if I were accepting that road for the public, the town's going to take it over, that's going to be maintained by the homeowner association, there were several sections of curb that are broken and have misaligned over time, and I would, I mean, I wouldn't accept that road until all that stuff was repaired. And I would suggest to homeowners, they need to talk to that developer and make sure that before they, they get finished, that they go out and do basically the same thing, do an inspection, and get whatever might be not right made right, because it's going to fall back to them pretty quickly. The EDP Challenge Bike Ride will be coming through here on Saturday. It's a ride that's been going on for several years. They start in Westminster, and they go throughout the county. They'll be having a pit stop down here at the park next to the tennis courts. I know they've been in contact with, you know, the fire service and everyone, so it's a well-publicized event. By just bringing it up again, we're happy to have them here riding through town, and hopefully, maybe they'll get a pit fee for a pizza or whatever it was here.
And just for citizens' concerns, just be careful Saturday, riding around the county, back roads, just be watching for bikes, so you're not part of an accident or anything, so just be careful.
Continuing on the, the Maryland Department of Transportation, the Consolidated Transportation Plan, the CTP, each year, the county sends to the state their list of priorities of projects, and our Main Street, High Street revitalization project remains on that list at number five, the same place it was last year. So basically, it's the same project, the same listing as last year. The actual tour meeting where the... The actual tour meeting where the high level officials come out and do their part is on September 19th at 1:30 at the County Office Building. And then there's what they call the pre-tour meeting, and that'll be the September 5th, same location, same time. And Neil and I usually, Mayor and I usually attend both of those. Especially the pre-tour, that's where you get a little more staff level information as opposed to the actual tour meeting. In your, in your books, if you, this next item, the Storm Drain Church Street at the Railroad, I received a call about someone concerned about erosion of the, of the Outfall Ditch that runs on that side, down that, along the side of the Myers Building down there. So I went down to look at it. Sure enough, it is eroding, and we have an erosion issue there at that corner of the, where the ditch makes a bend. We are going to have to go in there and find some way to stabilize that. But as I walked my way back up the storm drain system, just checking it out from, from top to bottom, I came upon this inlet that sits right in the ditch of the railroad at the crossing there. And that's what you have pictures of. And it is, it's something we're going to have to address right away. There's two pictures, and what you're looking at is an inlet where the grates have collapsed into the inlet itself. And there's two railroad tie retaining walls that you see. They're collapsing inward towards the inlet as well. They're what hold the ballast of the railroad back. So there's two pictures there. And so the second one shows, you can see where, you can see where the grading has collapsed right in. There's some pipes that come in from the side. They're basically all that's holding the grate up, the grate up onto the other side. So we're going to have to get in there, get with the railroad, figure out who does what, and not only fix this inlet, but also fix the, the outfall a little bit. So that's, that's going to be a, that's going to be a big project, it's going to involve several different agencies, I suspect, and, but it's, it's a hazardous situation that when you have a, these pipes are big, they're 24-inch pipes. They capture all the water that comes down Church Street, goes across Church Street, under the railroad, back across Church Street, and then discharges. So it's, it's something we need to really, I was never, I was, when I got out there and saw it, I was like, I can't believe this. So we're going to have to get on this and work at it consistently because it's, it's a bad situation and we need to fix that. So there's the bad news for tonight. On other things that aren't on report, just a couple of things to report on, we have, just this evening, had the mayor sign off on the final forms for our State Aid for Police Protection. It's a small grant that we get each year, about $5,000. It helps defer the cost of, of our community deputy, and so it's something we've been doing for years. That's filed. I wouldn't call it building boom, but we did issue one building permit for a new, a new residence in New Windsor, over on Maple Avenue, which is the first one. And I, I don't know how long in the time I've been here, I would say at least eight, six, eight years, maybe since I've had a new residence built. And I've had some conversations with someone else who's going down the same path, and maybe we're seeing a few, few residents here in town, which would be, which would be good news from that point of view. And the final thing is kind of, well, one of those things I guess everyone comes to eventually, but Steve Stralsberg, our longtime public works and fully, I believe he told me he's been with the town, worked for the town in various capacities for 21 years. The last seven as a full-time employee, has decided to take retirement, and actually his last day is tomorrow. So we want to thank Steve for his many, many years of service and wish him very well. And so we'll be, we'll be talking about that in the near future, how we want to proceed with that. But tonight is to remember Steve, and then hopefully we'll get him back sometime for a little recognition ceremony here and do something for him in that way.
We'll do, I'm sure, maybe, I don't know, it'll be next month, but probably next month, but do a formal recognition of his years of service and dedication to the town of New Windsor. But I would like the minutes to reflect that the mayor and council greatly appreciate his 21 years of dedicated service to the town of New Windsor and to the citizens of New Windsor. So if you see Steve, give him a little thanks. He's done a lot. I mean, snow, blizzards in the past, wasn't anything to work pretty much around the clock, 20 hours. You know, he was dedicated to clearing the streets, making the town look beautiful in all kinds of weather. You don't, don't get the option of calling in sick when it snows like that. So Steve's done an outstanding job for the town of New Windsor, and we wish him the best in retirement. Anything else?
That's all I have. I don't know if anyone has any questions of me. I can go over and answer them. Thank you.
Have six in your books if you want to follow. In the month of July, in our general fund, we took in deposits of $14,272, and we had expenses of $49,924.57, which left us with a balance in the general fund of $56,830.41. And then on the enterprise side, we had deposits of $96,294.79, expenses of $13,173.44, leaving a balance of $100,149.30. Any questions on the financial part? I would still like to encourage all the citizens, we do have a Twitter account, so I'd like to encourage you to sign up. I'm still learning it, but I have been putting some things on there, so it's New Windsor MD.
Yes.
Right? New Windsor MD. And also on the website updates, I spoke with Info Pathways, and that is progressing along, so.
Did you get everybody's bio yet?
I did not.
No, you did not? I got mine.
Yes, and you wanted to go on the record for that. Yes, I know.
Finally.
No, so we decided to.
I'm wondering who wrote it, actually.
We decided to go with what we have, and then if the others get theirs in, we'll add them later, so.
Okay. Without embarrassing anybody who ever hasn't, please get it to Donna. I can write one for you. All right, and audit process?
Yes. Audit process has started. I have met with our audit firm, which is SB and Company, just to go over the preliminary work with some dates. So they will be starting their field work August 26th. And they have given me their usual list of things that they need ready for that to begin. So it's under works.
Thank you, Donna. Any residents' concerns? Anybody have anything? Old business, new old business, new business, Sustainable Communities Resolution? I can say that real quick, huh? Resolution of the town of New Windsor supporting participation in the Sustainable Maryland Certified Municipal Certification Program, whereas the mayor and council of the town of New Windsor recognize that the residents of the town desire a stable, sustainable future for themselves and for generations, and whereas the mayor and council therefore seek to take steps to encourage a sustainable community. Now therefore, the mayor and council of the town of New Windsor do resolve as follows. One, that the town intends to pursue local initiatives and actions that will lead to a Sustainable Maryland Certified Municipal Certification. Two, that the mayor, mayor of the town, Neil Rup, shall serve as the town's agent for the Sustainable Maryland Certified Municipal Certification process, and that is, and that he is authorized to complete the municipal registration on behalf of the town of New Windsor. This resolution shall take effect on August 7th, 2013. Resolution number will be 08-07-13. Do I have a motion? Are there any questions? Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Schultz, seconded by Councilman Pauls Grove, to adopt Resolution Number 08-07-13. Any comments? All those in favor saying aye? Those opposed? So carried. That is one thing down for the application that we talked about earlier. Town, county agreement, if you look at Tab 8, Frank can give a little brief description.
Each year, the county, I guess pays or provides funds to the county, to the town, which represent services that the town provides itself that the county also collects money for, and they have a formula whereby then the town is, receives funding for what might be called considered duplication of services. And, and so they, they have a process by which they calculate that, and some of the services that, they also provided some services, and it talks about review of plans, they collect our taxes, they provide us planning services, they work through the building permits and inspections, animal control, police protection through the community deputy, and, and a big one that they work with is our National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, the NPDES, which has been much in the news of late with storm management fees. So anyhow, you worked this all together, and the bottom line is that we're going to, town's going to get about $65,340 from the county this year as its town-county payment, which is down a little bit from previous years. And, and that's because there's an inverse relationship between property assessments. One of the reasons is because there's an inverse relationship between property assessments and the amount of the payment. And even though the town of New Windsor's assessments went down relative to others, it didn't go down as much. So we ended up higher on the scale, so to speak, than some other areas did. So none of, none affected that it is. Ours goes down a little bit because the lower you are on that proportional scale, the higher percentage you get. So that's the, it's about as good of explanation as I can give you on why it's down a few dollars, but it's about $4,000. In any case, to receive this money, the council needs to vote to accept it, and then we have a form here that's agreeable, then mayor signs off, and we'll get a check in a short order.
Motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the town and county agreement for 2014.
We have a motion by Councilman Knoll, seconded by Councilman Pauls Grove, to approve the fiscal year 2014 town-county agreement. Any comments? All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? So carried.
Why don't you just go ahead and sign it, Mayor?
All righty.
You're signed right over here.
Yeah, I got it.
They'll take care of us, though.
Thank you. Thank you. I didn't think anybody had any problem with money.
No, we're getting it.
Zoning Ordinance Amendments, time extension for consideration. I will turn that over to council.
That's S.E., now, council. You will recall that finally, and with much ado, we introduced the ordinance that included the zoning ordinance changes that we had been working on in the Planning Commission. That was introduced on July 3rd. Ordinarily, what happens is we introduce something, the following month, we have a public hearing on it, and it gets adopted. However, because this is a little more complex, and the mayor and council wanted to discuss it, we decided we would talk about it at a work session. I was unavailable for the July work session. So fine, we'll set it for the August work session, and it was after I got back to the office, I thought that there was something about that made me itch. So I went and checked our charter, and the charter does require that you adopt or don't adopt an ordinance within 60 days of its introduction, unless you specifically defer consideration of that ordinance to a later date. Well, the next town council meeting after the work session is September 4th, which is more than 60 days after July 3rd. So in an abundance of neuroses, I think what we need to do is we need to extend formally the time for consideration. Moreover, there are some things in it that, I mean, that you may want to talk about or think about or change. So if we nail everything to the September 3rd or September 4th date, and then there's a change to be made, then we've got the same problem we have now. And because it's a zoning ordinance, it has to be advertised more than an ordinary ordinance, so we would have to put the ad in the paper before we even have the discussion about whether it's ready to proceed. So it's my recommendation, I sent all of that in that fairly long and wordy email that I sent, but it's my recommendation, frankly, that we defer specifically to the October meeting. We can do it in September. It just, if there's problems with deferring it in September, or if there's, if there's concerns and it's not ready to go in September, you could have a problem with that. That having been said, I realized after I sent this email that I'm not going to be here in the October council meeting. I don't ever go anywhere.
Read between the lines on that one.
But I don't, once we go through the work session and, and everybody's satisfied with it, nobody will care. I mean, we'll, we'll resolve it in advance of that, but just when I realized that, I figured I better say that while we're here. So I would, I would suggest that we put formally in the minutes that pursuant to your town charter, you're going to extend the time, you're going to defer the time for consideration of ordinance number, whatever it is.
07-03-13 to October?
To October, I think it's 5th.
Before we do that, just a question, if council, I'm not, I wasn't at the last meeting because I had my other committee meeting, but if council has some items that need to be discussed, and then it has to go back to the Planning Commission for maybe some input?
It would depend on how complicated that.
Should we maybe go to November just as a, a rebundance of caution?
Well, that would, that would keep in line with my general abundance of neuroses, so I mean, that's, that's a fair check.
I'm not sure if, if.
If it's something significant, you are going to, you're going to want to send it back to the planning commission.
Concerns about it.
And the commission's going to want to see it.
Right.
November 6?
I mean, there's no reason it needs to be done.
No, it's only, it'll be on its like two-year anniversary right now, so when we get it done.
That took a lot of hard work.
And it doesn't look like much when, I should have done bigger type or something so it looked like more. But we did work on it. So November 6?
Do I just say, if we do it, or do we need a motion?
I would, I would move it and second it and vote it up.
Do I air a motion for a time extension to November 6 for the zoning ordinance amendments?
I'll go ahead and make that motion for the zoning ordinance amendment, the time extension to November 6, town council meeting.
We have a motion by Councilman Knoll, seconded by Councilman Smith, to extend the consideration for zoning ordinance amendments to November 6. Any comments? All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? So carried.
Thank you.
And you'll be there November 6?
I would be there November 6, unless I win that $400 billion lottery.
Yeah, million.
Whatever. $400 million might as well be $400 billion.
All right. Any other new business?
Through the government.
Comments? Yes, sir?
Is there any ordinance changes on, on?
Yes.
Can you give a quick summary? Or is it lengthy?
Candidly, no. I, I, for one thing, I don't even have them in front of me, but they are, we went through the entirety of, except the sign ordinance, which we had done fairly recently, of the zoning ordinance. We deleted a lot of things that were old, and we changed some of the uses in some of the districts, we changed some of the lot sizes, we added some, some uses in certain circumstances in certain districts, we changed some things from permitted uses, which are automatically allowed, to conditional uses, which require Board of Zoning Appeals Review and Approval. It, it's really quite thorough.
Assisted living.
Yeah, we added assisted living as, for example, as a possible use in certain of the districts under certain circumstances, and some other small, small local businesses and new developments and a lot, so.
Some sections deleted entirely?
Yeah, and we changed the definitions where there are definitions for words that weren't even used in the code anymore, so we tried to find those and delete them.
And if I may add, one of the things that we did, most of the.
And if I may add, probably one thing that we did, most important was we met the zoning administrator who has been forced to cut it and got his concern.
So it was a very lengthy project. I'd be really remiss in trying to sum it up, especially without having it in front of me.
Is it possible maybe do a brief summary we could throw on the website? Is there such a thing as a brief summary for that?
I could try. I mean, I don't know how helpful it would be, to be honest with you. We could maybe, we could maybe do some bullets as to the major, the major changes, adding some of the new uses and things like that. I can try and I'll do that.
Because really, to understand, you have to look at the existing.
Yeah, that's part of the thing. You almost have to have the old one. But I can go through and try and do sort of an executive summary, if you will.
May not be a bad idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Dave Huffman here is chair of the planning commission. And due to the fact that my memory is not real good, sometimes I forget whether or not we approved you for another term on the planning commission. So if I can have council approval with a motion and a second, I greatly appreciate it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Dave Huffman, you have no comment, sorry, for another term on the planning commission. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And it's nice to have you back home.
Thank you. Good to be here.
I'll bet. Thank you for serving. Any other new business? Anybody else? Again, I want to thank the three different families and individuals that have decided to open business here in New Windsor. It's nice to see business coming back and hopefully we can help support that, not only as citizens, but as a town, with our staff and our services. But also hopefully you'll see Dealman Inn become revitalized and possibly have some shops there that might bring people into town and then decide they need something to eat. So keep tuned. But again, thank you for coming tonight and thank you for opening business here in New Windsor. One announcement I do have, Lyons Club Community Blood Drive, 2 to 8 tomorrow is the greatest feeling you will ever have when you give a pint of blood. Guarantee it. And if you want to prove me wrong, come down tomorrow between 2 and 8 and give a pint of blood and then let me know. So I will be there from 2 to 8. I will bring you juice, snacks, cookies, pretzels, whatever you need. But come down and support the New Windsor Lyons Club Community Blood Drive.
Where's that going to be held?
At the fire hall, at Windsor Station, 101 High Street.
Do you need an appointment for it? I know a lot of times, Rick Cross wants appointments. No?
It's nice to have appointments, but it might even be off the website now, but between 2 and 8, and they will take you, probably within 10, 15 minutes, you'll be giving blood. So greatly appreciate your support for that. Any other announcements? Hearing none? Adjournment?
Still move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.